Great. We're calling the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Oh, sorry Rebecca, but we are able to call the meeting to order and ask for roll call.
Councilmember Walter?
Present.
Councilmember Huffdie?
Present.
Councilmember Flynn?
Present.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Present.
Mayor Haskell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Thank you all. So the first order is to deliver a proclamation designating September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month. As we have been trying to recognize the importance of mental health this year, and I know we've always taken it very seriously, but this year we're integrating some, some specific activities. It's important to recognize this serious social issue. And so I have a proclamation, I'm not going to read it, but I am going to introduce two people who are going to receive this. Letitia Bido and Aria Kauschels. I'm going to ask them to come up and talk to us a little bit about what their organization does, and I'll make a presentation after they, they have a moment to explain it. So if you can come up to the dais.
Hello. Hey, it is on. Good evening, council members, members of the public, both present and online. My name is Letitia Bido, and I am a commissioner under the Behavioral Health Commission. Thank you very much for inviting us here, certainly for just honoring the importance of Suicide Prevention Month. We have the pleasure of collaborating in the county. So as I sit as a public member on the Behavioral Health Commission, there are countless year-long opportunities to become educated, reducing the stigma is critical. The training around knowing the signs because suicide is preventable. I also did not want to miss the opportunity to mention that it's also Recovery Month and recovery is possible. So really, I don't want to spend too much time. I have the good pleasure of introducing a youth colleague. She serves on the Youth Action Board. She is a tireless advocate, sits at our table often. And really, just for us, it's, it's an honor to be able to partner with the youth, especially because there's a statistic that I found rather alarming in terms of teen suicide. And that the second largest cause of death for youth ages 10 to 24 is suicide. It is imperative that we as a community, obviously a proclamation such as this one, just to help elevate the importance, the need of support and community education. And so I will, again, my colleague does not need any introduction, but I do have the good pleasure of introducing Aria Kauschek.
Good evening, City Mayor, council members, city manager, staff and residents of Porto Valley. My name is Aria Kauschek, and I am the co-chair of the Youth Action Board of the Behavioral Health Commission Youth Committee here on behalf of San Mateo County Suicide Prevention Committee. Thank you to the city of Porto Valley for joining other cities and the county in proclaiming September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month. The 2025 Suicide Prevention Month theme is Support Your Way, and is a crucial initiative because it moves beyond a one-size-fits-all approach to mental health and suicide prevention. By emphasizing individual autonomy and choice, the theme helps reduce the stigma that is often associated with seeking help. It validates the diverse and personal nature feeling, recognizing that it may look differently for everyone. September Suicide Prevention Month is deeply important to me because a close family member of mine survived two suicide attempts. Thanks to timely behavioral health support from our county, they are alive and doing well today, and that experience has shown me how life-saving accessible care can be. Beyond my family, I've watched friends and other people I care about struggle with suicidal thoughts, which makes this issue painfully personal and painfully common. That really highlights an urgent need to talk and move past, or move towards concrete action, expanding affordable, timely mental health services, funding prevention and early intervention programs in schools and communities, training coaches, teachers, and other first responders to recognize warning signs, and lastly, creating low-barrier crisis supports so people can get the help they need. Therefore, starting today, I invite you to all take action on one or more of these options. 988, save it on your phone and dial it when somewhat, when you or someone you care about is in crisis. Educate yourselves on what signs of suicide can look like. Look into resources within your community, and check in with the people you care about, listen without judgment, and learn basic warning signs. Lastly, I encourage everyone to attend a Suicide Prevention Month event. And you can get more examples of events at smchealth.com/spm. But here are some examples of events that you can attend during this month. First, it's Breaking the Silence, all about a doctor's insights on youth suicide awareness and prevention on Wednesday, September 23rd. Secondly, we have a podcast hosted by our whole Youth Action Board about suicide prevention and mental health awareness, also on Wednesday, September 23rd. And finally, we have Voices of Recovery Annual Dance that celebrates National Recovery Month with Voices of Recovery at their annual community dance on Saturday, September 27. Lastly, I want to end with extending my sincere gratitude to Porto Valley for recognizing September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month, and I'm looking forward to continuing these vital conversations that this recognition sparks. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you please repeat the number? I think you said 998?
Yes, 988.
988. See, that's the important part. And can you forward a link that we can post on our website? To link to information that you've just described?
Yes, I would be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna open up to comments by council if anyone wants to say anything. And if not, I will just proceed to.
I would just add, thank you for your presentation. It was great.
Thank you.
Yeah, likewise. Thank you, and thank you for your work on this effort. Thank you.
Oh, okay. All right, and I, I just want to say it's really important, if you've been affected by something like this, that one is empowered to take action. So for any members of the community that might be going through difficulties, both there's resources, but there's also a real drive for the community to need people to step forward and support these issues. So really encourage people to engage in whatever manner is comfortable. So with that being said, I'll, I'll hand off the proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Great success.
Thank you.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you very much. Really, really appreciate your time. Okay, next up is the Town Manager Report. So Darcy?
Hi, Darcy Smith, Town Manager. Brief update, please join us on Saturday, September 20th for two fun town events brought to you by the Parks and Rec Committee. The Tots for Zots Run starts at 10:00 AM, followed by the Town Picnic at 11:00 AM here at Town Center. And you can register for the run at the town website. And there's a lot to do with the picnic, too. There are jumpy houses, face painting, climb into the fire truck, Cub Scout hosted games, and a dunk tank. Most importantly, we're gonna have some road closures. So we put up some signs letting the public know, but please note that portions of Alpine and Portola Road from Alpine into the Town Center will be closed along the race route, beginning at 9:30 AM until about 11:30. And again, please advise by these road closures for safety for everyone. Second of all, as I mentioned the last meeting, we recognize the importance of the town audits. And so at the next meeting, the council will review the 2021 and 2022 draft audit and financial statements. But I just want the community to know that those are already available online if they want to prepare for the next meeting, because the Finance Committee reviewed them at the August meeting. So if anyone needs, wants to prepare and take some additional time to review those lengthy documents, they are available to the public, and we're posting the packet next week for the meeting on the 24th. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
So can I just add that I'm very glad I'm going to be out of town next weekend, and I'll miss the Dunk Tank? But otherwise, I would have loved to be there.
But, but Helen's volunteering, if I understand. I'm kidding. Just kidding.
But really quickly, also, we do, we do need volunteers. BPAC has asked that we do need volunteers to help with the road closure situation on September 20th.
Who do they reach out to if we have volunteers?
They can reach out to me or to Ed, Ed Holland.
Great.
Who's the BPAC Chair.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. This should be fun. I will be there. I'm not in the Dunk Tank, but we'll, we'll be there. Thank you, Darcy. Next up is Oral Communications. And for this, we want comments on items not on the agenda or on the Town Manager Report items. So I'm looking in the schoolhouse. I do not see any hands raised for oral comment. And I'm looking online. And I have one hand raised, Rita Comas.
Thank you for taking my, my comment, and I just want to mention that that 988 number is also for people that are suffering from a friend that may have gone to the next step, and they're, they're struggling with that, and they can call 988. My comment is, is really about the agenda. I'm so glad that we have a, a new permanent Town Manager. And, you know, and thinking about all of the pending items, especially, you know, the safety element and a few others that we've been promised every October. I, I look forward to having those particular items on future agendas. And I'm very happy to hear about the audit being reviewed once again on, and to be moved forward and look forward to the other outstanding audits moving forward. But, you know, just hope that some of the other pending items, once everyone comes to speed, that we can then go back and, and add the other open items onto future agendas. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. I'm looking online. There's no hands raised in the schoolhouse. There's no more hands raised for Oral Communications online. So at this point, we'll proceed next to the Consent Agenda. And first, I'll, I'll take oral comments on the consent, sorry, public comments on the Consent Agenda. I'm looking at the schoolhouse. I don't see anyone here. I'm looking online, and I do not see any public comments on that. So I'll bring it back and ask the council if anyone wants to pull any items. Anyone want to pull A, 6A, B, C, or D?
I'd like to pull 6D.
Okay.
Thanks.
And anyone else?
No.
Okay, and I would pull 6A for a short, brief question and discussion. So can I have a motion to approve items 6B and C?
Second.
So moved.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, motion passes. So my question on 6A, the the minutes, is that we took two items and flipped them, and I don't know whether the minutes should reflect that order of the flipping, because right now they don't.
Yes, I kept the original order as the agenda was published, and then just note in the minutes that we flipped the items.
Yeah, I'm, I'm neutral. I'm just asking for what is best practice here for when you do that? Do you change the minutes?
I, I think the way that the clerk handled it is best practice in terms of having a notation. There's probably no one way to do it, but I think that having that, that sentence clarifies the order.
Okay, then I'm fine with it. Can I have a motion to approve 6A?
So moved.
Right?
Seconded.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that, that motion passes. And now 6D, and I'll hand it over to Helen.
Yeah, just really quickly, I was curious how the appointments were made for the consideration of who the, who is going to the conference. Just was, did not hear about this before and thought this should be public.
Sure. Darcy, you, you have some framework for that. Do you want to comment?
Yes. Hi, Darcy Smith, Town Manager. So I follow, again, best practice in most communities, and the mayor is the primary delegate, and then the secondary backup delegates are first the Vice Mayor, and then the current League of California Cities Liaison. If they can't go for some reason, and I have had conversations with those individuals, and we will be sending at least one individual, then we would go to more alternates.
Great.
Yeah.
Because I. That was my only question. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, then motion to approve 6D.
So moved.
Second.
Great. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so 6D passes. So at this point, we move into the regular agenda, and Catherine, I don't know if you want to explain the basis for my recusal, but I'm recusing myself, and I'll be stepping away for items 7A and 7B, then I'll be back.
Yes, we should actually explain that just for the record. As a reminder, I know that you've recused on this item before, but as a reminder to the council and the community, Mayor Haskell lives within, the FPPC rules if you live within 500 to 1,000 feet of a project, there is a presumption of needing to recuse, and I believe you actually have an outletter from the FPPC recommending recusal. So, so yes, so Mayor Haskell will recuse on 7A and 7B, and the Vice Mayor will chair the mayor, share the meeting for these items.
Great. So I'll step out. Someone just can text me or email me to step back in.
Yeah, I'll text you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, do we have a staff report on 7A? Thank you. You're gonna need to speak very, I've found with that mic, you have to practically be swallowing it, unfortunately. Really close.
Pull it, pull it in.
Yeah.
All right. That works. This item is to consider a resolution approving $70,026.76 for town, reimbursing for town planning fees from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The Will of Comments Project, which has a deed restriction of for affordability on those units, on the units in the location. And based on your plant, your zoning code, the Town Council can waive or reimburse the fees that were paid for planning activities. And in fact, the Town Council had done this on the previous, previously, and it was in October last year. The, and so the property owner is requesting that these fees be reimbursed. There is funding available in the Affordable Housing Fund to accomplish that. And the zoning code requires that the planning, that the city council consider the, the number of units, right, income level, the extent to which the units are anticipated to serve populations in town with a particular need for affordable housing, such as senior, senior citizens or people who work in town, or in this case, people with developmental disabilities potentially. The expected financial impact to the town for the waiving of the fees and the financial feasibility of the project if some of all of the fees are not waived. So just, just to be clear, that there, there was, there were fees paid to the, to the Woodside Fire Protection District that are not being proposed to be reimbursed. But the $70,026.73 is a reimbursement of what was, what was paid by the project. And staff, staff does think that the criteria are, can be met, but it's a, it's a Town Council decision as to whether they want to authorize the resolution so that those fees can be returned. And just, just to be clear, these fees were already paid by the applicant. Since they were, they were paid and deposited in our general fund. And these reimbursements come out of our Affordable Housing Fund and would go back to the applicant. So just wanted to be clear where, about how the money is moving. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Terrence?
I have none.
Okay, Rebecca?
Maybe you could explain a little bit how the fees got so out of hand. If the original project, the estimate was 25,000, and now it's 10 times that. So I'm just trying to go across the whole thing. What, what happened? I mean.
I, I really can't, I really can't say. I know that the project was, took much longer and much more, many more iterations of review than, than was expected. It was a complicated project, and there were a lot of of design issues that were, that were, that were dealt with. It was, I wasn't, I wasn't directly involved in it, but my, my understanding and reviewing the record, there were, there were a lot more back and forths than one would hope in a project like this.
And do you anticipate for future affordable housing and just general developments that are on a larger scale? That perhaps the town has worked out some of the problems so that the next applicant won't have to suffer so much?
I can only say that I hope so.
Particularly the infrastructure issues, because that, working with infrastructure as well as with some of our other service providers, the Fire Department, Cal Water, West Bay, have we made any changes within the office to facilitate those?
I can't say that we have, but I will pass along your concern to the, the new interim planning board this last week.
Okay, thank you.
Helen?
Yep. Hi. I have, there, one of these questions, I, I under, I've talked to the Town Manager about it, but it does say that there were initially 13 total housing units, and now we're down to 11. Could we just be, you know, for the record, could you explain what happened with, with that number, if you happen to know? Okay.
So the original ASC approval was for 13 units, 11 affordable units for the supportive housing units, and then two manager units that would not be deed restricted. In terms of the project that was built, it was actually 11 total units. So nine deed-restricted supported housing units and two manager units.
Thank you. Um, whoops, I lost my, um. And just the amount per unit of a fee waiver, is that for her deed-restricted unit of the nine, or is that for every unit?
I, I can answer that. Town Manager, Darcy Smith. It is for the entire project, so all-inclusive of all fees paid to the town.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and the proposal indicates that if 50% or more of the units are affordable, then it, then it is subject to a fee. And, and nine of 11 are actually affordable.
Great, thank you. It also says on page. Hang on, let me just make sure. In a later letter, and that might be on the next, and let me make sure that's on the, we're on the right item. Hang on. Sorry. Joyous of Adobe. So let me just make sure. There was discussion about the pro forma, and whether that the applicant would show staff the pro forma. Has staff seen the pro forma?
No, we have not.
Okay, okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now I'm going to open it up to public comment. So let me start with people in the room. So Veronica, it looked like you have at least two.
Yes, I had two. First one is Iri Inanga, Inaniga? Or is it for the? Oh, okay. So that's the other item. So then for this one, Tim Clark.
Okay. So is anybody in the room wanting to speak on the fee waiver of 70,000? Yeah, was that a yes or a no? In, in the room? Just strictly on A. That's correct. Okay, so no, nobody in the room? All right, so. So Rita, do you have your hand up to talk about A? If you do, it's on Rita? Okay, welcome, welcome Rita.
Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me make a comment on this. You know, our affordable housing funds are limited. And this particular project has already received about 86,000 in the past. I'm not sure of the number, but I think it was about 86,000 from our Inclusionary Affordable Housing Fund. This is the second or third time that this project has asked our town for some or almost all of the funds in our Affordable Housing Funds. And our housing element that's been approved, we have to do 253 units. I'm not sure how many units have been built as, as a, now, but we have a really long way to go before we have to reach those numbers by, I guess, 2031. We have a, we don't have, we have problems with money in this town.
Rita, Rita, can I ask you, is this related to the $70,000 fee waiver, or are you speaking to the larger number?
I am, I am talking about this, because this is, you know, it's in the bucket. You know, it's already been about $86,000 that has been spent out, and, and perhaps it's more. I would love to know what that number that has been reimbursed so far. I'm sure the town would like to know. But we have so many projects that we don't know how much, how we can help those other projects. And so, you know, being that this particular project has already received so much money from, from the town, I, I say we need to really look at our inclusionary housing policy, and I noted on page 62, it was, it's signed by Jeff Offs, who was the mayor in December of 2023, but it was not then signed off by the clerk. So it, it just, you know, I'd love to see what we have filed in the town. Maybe this is what we have filed in the town with just Jeff Offs' signature. So I'd like to see something in a, in another place. But thank you for all that you do, but I, I think we need to look at the bigger picture and our finances and all the stuff that we'll have to do, because some of this, we'll have to pay some of the infrastructure for the future projects that are not even started. And we need to conserve our, our funds and look at the big picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. And I can just say that if we approve this fee waiver, the number is going to be around $256,000 of total fee waivers. All right, anybody else? I don't see any other hands in Zoom, any hands in the room? All right, I'm going to close this item and bring it back to the council. Who would like to start? You know, if you don't start this time, you're going to start next time, so. Okay, Rebecca, how would you mind starting?
Okay. I.
I don't have a big issue with paying this fee, the fee waivers. We already have a policy for fee waivers, so I would like to have us in the future consider changing that fee waiver policy to remove the moderate income units. But for low income, for sure, I think it's reasonable. It's a reasonable request. And I think it also reflects the fact that this project has gone through hell because of the town. So I think it's reasonable to pay for their fees. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Mary?
Your mic. I feel very comfortable with this. I'm actually somewhat surprised that it even had to come to the council. It's what we're... It's part of what we're committed to, I think, with these affordable projects. So I feel perfectly comfortable with moving ahead with this.
Okay, thank you. Helen?
I am fine with it overall. I am concerned about, you know, what Rebecca said initially about that it started out at 25,000 and we're 10 times further along now. So I would hope in the future that it would be a one-time bite at the apple and a, you know, a consistent bite at the apple instead of nibbles. I don't think that system works for anyone, and I don't know how to make those changes, but I would note that. So I support, you know, the fee waivers this round, but in the future, I would like developments to have one bite at the apple to save everyone time and money. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm comfortable with this as well. I would note that I don't think these cost increases are the sole responsibility of the developer. You know, the town planning department has been in disarray for like the last three years, and I think that's led to a large part of this. So I think a large part of that is on us. I mean, you know, Terrence said some of the design was complicated, and I can accept that some of that was the design, but I think we had our share in it. So I'm very comfortable in paying for this. I think it's important for these kinds of projects, so I'm definitely in favor of it. So with that, can I have a motion?
I make a motion to reimburse the fees of 70,000 and what was the total?
70,026.73.
70,026.73. From the Affordable Housing Fund.
Can I get a second? Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Terrence. Okay, now we're going to move on to agenda item 7B, which is to consider an adoption of a resolution to appropriate up to 3.5 million from the housing fund for Willow Commons. I'm assuming there's a staff report from Mark? Welcome, Mark. You got to turn the mic on to start with. There you go, now it's on, so that's good. And you have to, when you sort of hear your voice echoing, that's how you know you're good.
Thank you so much, the vice mayor and the council. First, I will answer the question about how's my poetry? I did take the class. I have three poems finished. I have four poems in process. So I had to go write this report. I had to stop that process and do this. Anyway.
I was sort of hoping the staff report would be poetry, but, you know, next time.
So many editors, the poetry got lost.
Got it, there you go.
But anyway, I will be looking at this kind of at a 30,000-foot level. I'm trying not to get into many of the weeds. This is a big, potentially historic night because this might be the first time that we've actually done a grant of some kind from our Affordable Housing Fund. But let me just kind of start from the beginning. When I first joined the town as the interim, several of you, current and previous council members, suggested that I meet with Jim White to learn about Willow Commons. So I did do that. I met Jim and Patty. I learned about the project. I learned about the frustrations. It was a project that I immediately kind of fell in love with. It was something unique, with a unique clientele. And like I say, I learned about the issues with the town. Visited the project before it was finished. I visited the project when it was finished. I talked to people who were also visiting, very impressed with the project and a bit of pride about the project that was being built here in this community. So however, the issue before us is that we have a request for 3.5 million. And just a little bit of background here. The ASCC did approve this project in December of '21. So this has been around for a while. In January 2022 was the initial request for the $3.5 million grant, coming out of a a fund that had been developed because the Blue Oaks project was paying fee waivers rather than building affordable housing. Council approved the initial fee waivers in February of '23. That was your first stab at it. And as Terrence explained, the fee waivers are the developer pays the fees, then you got to pay in the affordable housing areas, what council's been approving. The policy was developed by our mayor, today's mayor, then council member Haskell and council member Huffty, presented to the council in November of '23, approved by the council in December of '23. But on the request for the 3.5 million, no council's taken action until tonight. So it's been out there for a while. Currently, in the Affordable Housing Fund, we have 4.8 million and such change. And as I indicated, that's out of the Blue Oaks projects with in-lu fee. And so far, we've seen some of us on fee waivers, and we've also budgeted about $115,000 for the consultants to help us do the amendments to the housing element to make sure the housing element aligns with the council action. Before I left, I agreed to take on this report since I had been spending time on the project and working with Jim and Patty White and that I would do the presentation. But I do want to acknowledge that I've had a lot of help from your town manager, Darcy, and the town attorney, Catherine, from the Whites themselves, from Terrence and some others in putting this together. And the focus of the staff report and the discussion tonight is on those nine deed-restricted units that we know have happened. So I'm going to kind of get out of the way of all the things that could happen because they are in the could happen category. And I know that's been confusing to all of us who have been working on this. But if I look at the big picture here, to me, we have one major issue. What is the town's commitment to affordable housing? Both in terms of funds and in terms of collaboration and communication. Now granted, we want all projects to be well communicated. It's a major area that we've been concerned about in the planning, building area, about return phone calls, about ongoing communication. One of my basic rules is you cannot over-communicate. And that stuff is being worked on, but especially needs to be worked on in affordable housing. And as we're learning, this is the first real affordable housing project in the town. And you often find all, every possible mistake is going to be made as we learn. But one of the big things is to actually look at it as a collaboration and also to take a look. And I think the memo we got from the Whites is in your packet, is publicly distributed, does outline things that work and things that didn't work that we can all learn from. So how did I come with the 1.35 million plus the fee waivers, which totals 1.6 million? 606,000 or roughly 178,000 per unit for the nine units? First of all, I wanted to make a statement that we support projects like this. Second, I wanted that we were paying more for our town to be plugged into this than the county of Santa Clara. County of Santa Clara granted a million five. And it's our town that's benefiting from this project, this meaningful project for a special clientele. And that, but I also wanted to leave some funds behind for future projects. Now, it is possible, if we want to light a fire under future projects, we could also say, well, the Whites could return in 12 months, and if there's still, that money's not been spent. I mean, it's been there for 12 years already. This will be the first time. Then maybe we'll look at the rest of the 3.5. It's up to you. But that's how I wanted to leave something behind for the projects, particularly our church projects. And I think there are two that we're looking at. And I know that your current town manager is working in a sincere and collaborative way with the churches, and will be working with Stanley Low as well to get, that we're serious about affordable housing. But that's kind of how I landed on this. As I indicated, the first time affordable housing projects are challenging because they are new to us. We can learn from that, and that memo will teach us some things. There are some things that are identified by the Whites that this council has done a lot of good things about. I mean, you have made affordable housing and the whole issue of how the planning department communicates with the community and collaborates on projects. You've made that a high priority. It's probably one of your top three priorities that you've asked us the staff to deal with. And one of the other things you wanted was to stabilize the executive team. And you've done that. You now have a regular town manager, regular finance director, a regular town engineer, and you're recruiting for your planning director replacement. You've also mentioned that you've made housing one of your top priorities right there with financial issues, revenue enhancement issues, and some safety issues. As I indicate, we, one cannot over-communicate. We need to keep pushing, and this council has been active in pushing us to communicate, communicate, communicate. But in the world of affordable housing, it's a time to lead, not just to react to the HCD. And this council has been about leadership. So I think that's important. And it's time to look at how do we collaborate consistently from the get-go? And I think, again, reading the message that we received and the writing from the Whites who are online tonight so they can answer questions as well. I think there is a good team in place to deal with some of the issues that the council has asked us to focus on. And you have my recommendation. Why that recommendation's there? You have the resolution. You have the language that's involved with that. But you also have options. You can do something less. You can do nothing. You can do the 3.5 million that's requested. And you'll see in the messages, comments you've received in writing that people are at different places on that. Some are in favor of the full 3.5. Others are in favor of something less. So this is a big deal issue, and I can see why there's a lot of community interest in it. So, but I also feel that's important to decide tonight so we can move forward with other projects and move forward with the affordable housing, including getting our housing element amended so that the Ford field is out and the other projects are in and those kinds of things. We can move this off the table. And I thank the council and the mayor and the vice mayor for making this a shorter agenda so that we can focus on these issues. So with that, I'll answer any questions I can. I can tell you I don't know any questions that are answers that are in the weeds. So hopefully somebody can help me on that, but I can try to answer questions on my thinking. And I appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward and to meet with you and talk with you about this tonight. And I'm hoping we can have a good conversation.
Great, thank you, Mark. All right, I'll start on this side of the room. Helen, do you have any questions for Mark?
I have a lot, so. Okay. First of all, thank you, as always. Nice to see you. Thank you for your report. Right now, we have a 50 on Willow Common, and I'm really glad to hear that the applicant is online because my understanding is there is a 55-year deed restriction in play on those nine units at Willow Commons. Is that correct?
It's my understanding, and Catherine can turn that with me.
So could we, if, for instance, if, if, for instance, if it were to come back in 12 months, for instance, if they were to apply again, would the deed restriction potentially go longer?
I will ask, I don't know.
Can that, right, can that be changed at this point?
The recorded document can be amended so long as both parties agree. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just to be clear, we, and for the public record, do we have in existence any current impact fees or in-lu fees or inclusionary fees? But there are three different beasts for affordable housing on any development in existence in Portola Valley?
I don't know if we do it this time, but that's still an option for where we want to see affordable housing, and they choose not to, and they do in-lu fees. I think there are other ways you can also put more money into the fund. You can use the PV fund as a way to put more money into the housing fund. There's other ways to look at that if you want to. But I don't know of any projects of the Blue Oaks size right now. That doesn't mean they aren't in the queue. It just means that I don't know of any right now.
Right, and I realize, actually, and this is more of a comment, but I realize that we don't have any. And I would like them to be considered in future prioritization for council priority setting for consideration, not necessarily for like a plan unit development, but for, you know, potential remodels or, you know, or...
Susan, I should keep you to questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Question, it's possible to look at those options.
Right, okay. Do you know if they applied for any federal tax credits, state tax credit, or state or county affordable housing funding?
I do know what I know on it. They did not. Part of the reason they did not was they wanted to leave the decision-making around it in the hands of the town as opposed to the state or federal government.
Okay. Okay, and that's my questions to start with, thank you.
Nice questions, thank you so much.
Thank you, Helen. Mary?
As far as the history is concerned, I missed seeing a application. And I suspect it was the one in 2024 withdrawn? And why was there no formal application in this packet?
You have the original application from January of '22.
For the 3.5? Yeah, January of '22.
The email re-application of the same application that came at my request from the Whites. When I asked, I said, "Do you have a new council? So we need a new application." So I believe that email is added to the agenda as an attachment. It's not a big formal application. It's saying, you know, here is what my application was, so it's still there. So it's still there. But there was, it did add, follow my request of getting something in writing about that.
Okay. It would have been nice to have had that January 2022 application. I mean, the question is why we weren't privy to that at the time of reviewing this.
I did watch all the council meetings, all the ASCC meetings, all related to this.
Gee.
It's, well, to get ready, you know?
Yeah, a lot to do.
And what the discussion was, let's wait for there's a policy. Then we had the policy, and then nothing still happened. I still ask them to submit something. And like I say, that should be attached, but I hear what you're saying. We should have included the original application.
Yeah, and just to clarify what we were doing. Okay. I, I, I feel comfortable with the work you've done and, and the comparison that we've gotten. And so I don't have a question per se at this point.
Thank you, Mary. Rebecca?
Hi, could you clarify what it, what the prevailing wage requirement issue is?
See, Ken, I can just say what's fascinating with that is that it never came up previous. All the ones I looked at, it was never an issue. I think it becomes an issue when we have a grant application. But I can say in my conversations with Mr. White that they did use the carpenters' union. It's all union labor that's been done. So the prevailing wage, it's possible, I mean, the County of Santa Clara had to look at that. And I believe there's probably an exemption in there. But since it never came up, there was never a requirement in the material I looked at. And I think Catherine can take it from here, but as I understand it, it's when the grant comes into play. So let me, I know our attorney.
Thanks, Mark. Yet, at a, at a high level, when public funds are used, i.e. a grant of public funds for a project, that triggers the requirement to use prevailing wage or to identify an exemption that would apply. There, there are several exemptions available under state prevailing wage law. And as Mark noted, this, the county also did need to think about this and ensure compliance. And so it is our understanding that the county worked through that to ensure that they could also give, so that the county could provide the $1.5 billion grant for the project and ensure prevailing wage. And I will just note that as part of the, this, the town's policy, affordable housing policy requires an agreement with the recipient of any funds. And so this would be part of the language in the agreement as well.
So typically, an application for public funds is pretty extensive for affordable housing. It includes a pro forma for 25 years of expected expenses. It includes what the funds would be used for. It obviously includes, you know, the, the actual package of what will be built and all that sort of thing. So this situation is obviously very different. An application was made before the project was built and it was pushed off. The new application is just sort of a re-request for the funds. So how does this work? I mean, the money's been paid out by the applicant, the donor. Is there a use for the $3.5 million request, specific use? Or is it just sort of paying for past expenses? Or are there future portion of this project that's not completed? Like the cafe, I think, still needs to be done. I'm, I'm not clear on what the request for the money will be used for.
You are correct that when the application was originally made, the project was not finished. It's now finished. So the grant is to help with the costs that was made by the developer. And it's, for me, it's a bigger thing of saying, if we're going to be serious about affordable housing, it's going to take some money from the town to do it. So this is kind of a statement grant, but it's also, just because it's privately funded, doesn't mean we shouldn't say we are proud of this project and we'd like to support it and make a statement about it. As to the details, I don't, it may be more in the application that was done in December, I mean, in January of 2022. I think it's a larger question is do we want to at least acknowledge that this is an important project, it's something that's good, and we ought to put some money into it as saying, you know, the town is behind this. So, but that's just my feelings about it, having toured it. So I admit that I have a bias to a degree. This is a special project. It's been done really well, and I'd like to see the town with some pride say, yes, we were part of funding it, even if the funds are being sent to help defray the costs at the private.
Could you clarify the indemnity situation?
I cannot, but I can sure that our town attorney can help with that.
Yeah, as part of the affordable housing agreement, I would recommend that the town require indemnification of the town in exchange for release of the funds. And that indemnification would include any claims related to prevailing wage, but really any claims at all.
Could you clarify a little bit more information about the agreement that you would reach with the project in terms of particularly, you know, every project that involves public funding in a normal situation requires quite a bit of transparency and reporting, periodic reporting? Could you clarify a little bit more what the plan is for that?
You know, the, the town's policy doesn't actually provide a lot of detail. And this is in, in the packet. Looks like page, the number, numbering's a little hard to read, 67, I think. The last page of the affordable housing policy requires that every recipient enter into a written agreement with the town, which sets forth the terms and conditions of the grant or loan. At a minimum, the agreement shall describe the allowable uses of the grant or loan funds, the dollar amount and dispersment method, compliance with applicable town standards and policies for affordable housing, and periodic reporting to assist the town in the monitoring of compliance with the agreement. This agreement has not yet been drafted. Basically, we're looking for, you know, policy direction to see if the council wants to move forward with the grant in the first place. And then we would work with, you know, staff and, and the applicant to reach an agreement that includes those provisions.
Yeah, I think along with the town attorney saying, this council can say, this is what we want to see. This is the kind of reporting we went back. And you're right, there are some things that aren't finished as well. It is our first project, so we can make it a learning project for us. And there might be things that you want to include in whatever agreement that's done. So.
Could, could you clarify a little bit more about the, where you came up with the 150,000 number per unit?
Yes. I came up with it because I wanted to, I felt it was important that the town had a bigger stake in it than the County of Santa Clara.
I see.
So 100,000 gets me 900,000. You know, that's almost an insult. 150,000 would get me that 1.35, and then you add the fee waivers, you get to the 1.6, which is more than the County of Santa Clara. That's, I know that's not a detailed explanation, but that was kind of how I felt that at least we ought to be more than an adjacent county in a project that at least everybody I've talked to feels good about to be in this town. So that was, that was why. Appreciate the question.
Thank you.
Can I try?
What, I don't, are you done, Rebecca? Great, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
Okay, so transferring it into the number of units. That does, the number, the number of, the number of dollars per unit is what we're sort of honing in on, as far as I can tell. Is that what the 175,000 was?
You add it all together, you add the fee waivers.
Yeah.
The 100, the 100 million 35, which is 150,000. You get 178,000 and some change. And I'm not saying that should always be it, but that's what you have now. And, you know, you have debates about, well, the city should put in X percent or whatever, the county should put in Y percent. This is our first one. There may be others that have another opinion on that. Certainly, the developer of this may be online. Yeah, that's, that's how I came up with the math.
Yeah, it's so interesting that we're surrounded by regulations, and yet there seems to be no rule here. We're making up our own rules for something that we can barely afford. But the, the question amounts to, are you happy with making at this juncture, just using the nine units as the basis of the equation?
Well, the nine units, once I dug into it, talked it over with town manager and others, that's what's been actually.
Yeah.
I think the other is that there are, and it's in the whites memo to the council, you can see what other jurisdictions have done. And we are not at the top of that list. So they, they're in, they have a graph or whatever, and they're showing what local jurisdictions around us have put in. I know we're not in a position at this point necessarily to do that much, but other jurisdictions around us have put in more per unit. But that's, and we can still do that. You can still, the council can say, no, we'll just do the whole amount. That's why I wanted, like, the 1.6 million still leaves us 2.2 for other projects.
I guess my, my goal is to see, get you to tell us how this gets us out of the situation of being nibbled without, without, having to go back to the whole definition. If we can come up with an equation, then we at least have something to start with next time.
I think there are equations. I'm not sure if this is the best one. But I think once we take some kind of action, we can work harder on getting the equation. I know the whites definitely have an idea because they've been in this business a lot longer than I have. I know that the church I go to, when we built our 40 units of affordable housing on our backlog. I know how much the county put in. It was like 5 million against the $18 million project. So, you know.
Yeah.
What was any magic number?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm also, yeah, my other question is San Mateo County didn't come up with any? It was Santa Clara County?
It was Santa Clara County.
What, how did that happen?
And apparently, they liked the projects. There is a staff report, I think, that, that I know Catherine had looked at. But yeah, I found that interesting.
Yeah.
I'm sure Jim and Patty will probably have some further perspective on what an amount ought to be.
Mm-hmm. Well, they do.
You saw it.
We, we know it. Yeah.
Very useful.
Very.
To, to take a look at down the road. But we have twin goals here. You know, one is to make a statement about this project. We can show HCD, we can show other communities that, yes, we feel good about this and this. But also to leave enough for other projects. But then there's that third thing of, well, we could also say, if these other projects don't get going here, we are not going to have this money just hang around. That's kind of to you all, whether you want to make that radical kind of move, but that's another possibility. But that's, those twin goals make it a little trickier because I could easily say, let's do the full ask, but then that would leave less money for the future. And I'd like to see Christ Church, let that church, they need those resources to have it. And I think there's a lot of things we can do that we didn't do on this project in terms of collaboration, in terms of communication, in terms of not surprising them about, oh, what about this, what about that, without talking to people. There's also, some of these projects are going to need help with a nonprofit developer, like Mid Peninsula Housing. And can we match them up with that? There's things we can do, not to do the work, but to collaborate in these kinds of things.
Can I just add through the chair?
Sure.
Briefly, briefly. So I just wanted to get back on that and just say, it really varies project to project. There's no formula. I did a lot of research on this because I received a lot of questions on it. And every project is different. And usually, the decision-making bodies just want to preserve flexibility because, again, sometimes there's different needs and there's different interests. And I just want to point out a resource which I distributed to you earlier today, which is that the San Mateo County Department of Housing Affordable Housing Dashboard provides all this information about projects, the 68 projects that have been funded in this county, many of them local funds and county funds since 2012. And in looking at that, it just varies dramatically. It varies usually based on AMI, so a deeper affordability level generally needs a deeper level of support. But it just varies dramatically. So I would just encourage you to look at, through that angle and, and look at flexibility. And one more thing to add is that many jurisdictions do provide a funding based on the total number of units. So we've talked about the nine affordable units. I just want to point out there's two non-deed restricted units. Those are intended to be managers' unit. I visited the site. They are currently occupied by IDD and autism individuals, so they are likely functioning as low-income units. There's not a need right now at this point in time for staff. But just to point out, often cities will fund based on the totality of the units and not necessarily just the low-income units because the set aside or managers' units support the entire project.
So, Mary, are you done?
I think so.
Thank you. So thank you, fellow council members, for your good questions. I think you've asked many of the things I was interested in. One question I did have is, there was talk of some additional units, potentially because there's sort of, you know, two entrances, but it's a common kitchen, and it might or might not count as separate units. Where are we on that? Like, what, what do we know?
I can tell you what I know, and then I will turn it over to you if you know more. I can say your town manager, with our new interim planning director, actually toured those units, looked at the site, and there are various definitions of how those work. We have not checked it off with HCD to see whether they would qualify. We do have an amendment to the agreement that says we could make those potentially into deed restricted units. But there are some questions about kitchens and access and so on. And I will turn it to, since Darcy was onsite and Catherine's been doing research on this, turn it to them. But that's what I know so far is that I was out there and I got excited about it, and everybody got excited about it until I understood that there's a lot to it. I'd like to get assistance from the team over here.
I, I'm happy to follow up, and, and Darcy, feel free to, to jump in. So when we're looking at how HCD defines units for the purposes of our quality, satisfying our RENA allocation, that's our regional housing needs allocation, I believe. And we have to do reporting every year to see how we're doing compared to what we're required to do. They have a kind of tricky definition of a unit that requires separate living quarters. And what HCD looks at is whether the occupants live and eat with other persons, which would not be separate. And so it kind of really depends on where the kitchen is. And the current, you know, the current setup, for some of the units, not all of them, but some of them has a shared kitchen. The town manager has referred to it as a Jack and Jill kitchen, which actually I think is helpful to kind of envision it. You have the bedrooms and the other living quarters on either side in the, in the shared.
You have the bedrooms and the other living quarters on either side and the, and the shared kitchen kind of in the middle. And I guess the bottom line is it's unclear whether HCD would accept that as, as a unit for the purposes of our qualifying, you know, our annual reporting. And so that's going to require some additional investigation. You know, other jurisdictions that I've worked in have the, you know, basically have looked at, well, if you put a sink and a hot plate and a microwave in the, you know, in the bedroom, then that can add, add a unit. So it's tricky. And anyway, I think that's, I think that's about all that we know, but I'll, I mean, I do want to check and see if there's anything else Darcy wants to add.
Yeah, we'll be checking with HCD because I would say we don't want to leave units uncounted. That's not the best practice, but it's just going to take more time than tonight. So before the council, you have the facts and circumstances of what has been presented tonight and in the record, and I would just encourage you to take that into account. And then as Mr. Linder stated, we can revisit this once we get new facts and circumstances, but I don't know when that will be. And I would just encourage you to review the, the application tonight that's before you.
Sure. Yeah, I just, as we're thinking about the total pot of money, then the total number of units starts to matter. And, and I do understand that we need to do some further research. Certainly the fact that it has separate entrances and stuff is going very encouraging to me, but, but I understand that it's going to be up to the regulator to, you know, decide what they consider acceptable. Okay. I'm about to move to public comment. Any other questions? Are we good? All right.
I just want to thank the council for the questions.
Yeah. Thank you, Mark, for your presentation. So I know we have people who would like to comment that are in the room, so why don't we start there? So Veronica, can you help me with?
Yes. So our first speaker is Ari Inanaga.
Absolutely. So come on up here.
Her son Jimmy.
So welcome. Thank you for coming tonight.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Adi Inanaga, and I wanted to give you a personal view of the importance of the project to Portola Valley families. My family has lived and actively participated in Portola Valley for 18 years. My son Jimmy, who's very energetic and engaging, has really benefited from living here. Though he has significant cognitive disabilities, we instilled the goal of more independent living. However, we were planning on leaving our beloved Portola Valley blinded. That's why we were so relieved and grateful when we heard about Willow Commons. And even more exciting was when Jimmy was offered a permanent shared housing option at Thistle House. It's a program connected to Willow Commons. This will allow him to stay close to his family and this community he knows well. In the past, you may have seen him riding his bike to his job at Ace Hardware, to horseback riding camps at Spring Down, working on his Eagle Scout project, going to Valid Presbyterian Church, and of course, grabbing a snack at Roberts. Willow Commons offers more than housing. It supports health, independence, and community. Currently, Jimmy is participating in life skills training, enrichment, and will soon be starting a job readiness program. Participants are expected to be active, engaged citizens, and they are. They are busier than me. That's why I'm here to ask you to approve a grant of $3.5 million from the town's Affordable Housing Fund. This fund was created for exactly this purpose. Willow Commons is real. It delivers affordable, permanent, supported housing, and directly advances the town's affordable housing obligations as well as a fair housing mandate by serving residents with disabilities. Funding this project, I believe, is not just the right thing to do, it's the best thing to do for our city. It supports local families like mine, boosts our credibility with the state, helps local businesses, and reflects the values of our community. It will also serve as a model residential and enrichment program, setting an example for other cities to follow in advancing accessibility to independent living for adults with intellectual disabilities. This opportunity for my son is beyond our wildest dreams. For our family, having our son be able to live nearby or not having to relocate our family to be near him is, is just priceless. You can't put a monetary value on it. Please don't let this opportunity pass us by. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're glad you're still in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
All right. What's next Veronica?
Uh, one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. No, please, go ahead. My apologies.
My name is Jimmy Inaga. I just finished the Wayfair program at Fresno State. I am happy I am moving into Thistle House. If not, I would still be living in Fresno away from my family. I am looking forward to hanging out with my roommate at Thistle. I am taking classes at Willow Commons. The best are Spanish cooking. I also like gardening and socials class. Please support us.
Thank you, and congratulations on your acceptance at Thistle.
One more in-person comment from Tim Clark.
Welcome, Tim.
As you know, I'm with La Jara Community Church. I'm on the Affordable Housing Task Force, and I'm speaking as an individual here, but I've been at that church in, in Port of Valley for 40 years. As you know, we're contemplating our own affordable housing project, a small one. And so it puts me in a position of having a conflict of interest, which is why I'm not recommending any particular amount for the, this project. I don't want to be in competition with it at all. Just as an update for you, we are in the legal paperwork phase of our engagement with Habitat for Humanity, which has been going on for a year, and I hope it'll be done by the end of this year. And so it would be great if we could have a decision by that time. From my perspective, I think Mr. Linder has expressed the key question here. What is Portola Valley's commitment to affordable housing? Not just this project, but more generally. That's why you have this fund. As you know, that affordable housing project, I have five things that I wanted to say to Affordable housing projects require subsidies. Otherwise, the people who get, who, who move in there can't afford them. That's the very basic definition. And the most basic metric is the one that's been pointed to here, which is how many, how much subsidy per unit? And spoken in the industry is how much per door? That's the way they describe it, as you probably know. And I listened very carefully to Mr. Linder because I read the report and I could, I didn't see any reason for coming up with whatever number was there, either for the subsidy, and I think that's what Councilwoman Huffme was saying. I don't, I think you probably want to have some kind of reasoning or justification for whatever number you put up there. And you know that whatever you number you put up there, I'm going to start with that for my request if we come back. So that's, I think you need to think about it more than just, well, and as Mr. Linder also said, the figures from Portola Valley paled before what other jurisdictions are doing. That gives you a disadvantage in terms of attracting affordable housing developers. They're going to go where they can get the biggest subsidy. You've promised to make 41 low-income units of affordable housing in your, in your RENA plan. You now have 11, I think, unless it's, unless it's 13 or 16 or whatever. You have a handful. You have six years left to do that. I've been working on my projects for more than six years already. So your time is, you don't have an infinite amount of time to do this right. Other affordable housing potential developers are going to be watching what you do on this because there's no real policy. What you have are guidelines. It doesn't help you know how to apply, what the criteria are.
So Tim, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up. It's three minutes and we're 30 seconds over.
I'm sorry.
No, no worries.
You didn't tell me it was three minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So just, so everybody knows, both online and in the schoolhouse, we have a three-minute limit. So if you could wrap up in the next, say, 15, 20 seconds?
Yes.
Just give me your sort of conclusion.
My final, my final point is that the other way you get subsidy for affordable housing is, is what you've done with this project from philanthropy. Philanthropy is going to look at what the town is willing to put up. So philanthropy will take its money to places where towns will put up more. So there's a lot of people who'll be watching however you make this decision because it's a precedent. And I hope you're able to make a wise and a quick decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. All right. Are there any other people who would like to comment that are in the schoolhouse? Please come up. So Betsy, if you could just introduce yourself, welcome.
Betsy Morgan Thaler here, speaking as a resident, and welcome back, Mark. Lovely to see you. Members of the town council, former and current town manager and staff. As others have before me and more will long after me, I want to acknowledge my great respect and appreciation for Patty and Jim White, for their vision and commitment to the community we call Willow Commons. It is a source of unreserved pride for us all. If such a role could exist and were it mine to offer, I would nominate them as community grand marshals of the Zotsitot Town Center Parade. Like that event, they sit at the heart of the community. Independent of what is our collective genuine affection for the great good of Willow Commons is the question of distributions from the Affordable Housing Fund. I support the full waiving of fees. It is the second task on the table that I address, that we allocate 77% of Portola Valley's Affordable Housing Fund. 77% represents the full 3.5 million for one project, as it concerns me when many more projects the community also very much needs have not yet begun. I want to acknowledge the extraordinary burden posed by the stresses of COVID and the housing element process and the 100% planning department turnover that contributed to the town construction projects distress over the past five years. That is some total, not exclusive to Willow Commons. If the town is in any way attempting to balance those losses through use of the Affordable Housing Fund, I may understand it, but I think it quite misguided as they affected everyone under construction. Council members, you have taken the time to review the housing element, but to refresh the memory of those who have not as much familiarity, there are a multitude of places where the town explicitly communicates its reliance on the Affordable Housing Fund as the financial source to execute HCD mandated activities. These are staff and consultant-executed tasks that will be underwritten by the Affordable Housing Fund and within a very short timed table. This is no time to deplete the necessary resources we need to execute these promises, and to do so would be a form of risk-taking I don't want to envision, given what the town has so recently suffered. The town's approved 2025, 2026 budget that is not balanced, and in these certain times we cannot count on federal money, state money, or county money to fill in the gaps of our already limited toolkit. The Affordable Housing Fund is an asset we require to realize our near-term pledges and future housing development. I urge you to please practice financial prudence. Thank you for your consideration, council. Thank you for your excellent presentation, Mark. And importantly, thank you again, Willow Commons.
Thank you, Betsy. Judith, please come up.
Welcome. If you could just introduce yourselves so people online can hear. Judith Murphy, 35-year-old resident of Portola Valley. I think everyone agrees that this is an extraordinary and admirable project. There's very little has been done like this. Hopefully more will be done, but, but the request for 3.5 million is disproportionate in many ways to compare to the amount. It's a limited fund. There are no in-going to it at this point, and we are in fragile economic times. So in these times, to take a huge chunk out of this fund seems very disproportionate. It's disproportionate to our needs going forward. There are several identified projects in the pipeline, and there hopefully will be more. The fact that it's been sitting in the fund for 12 years unused, to me, is irrelevant because there haven't been really uses for it before now. And now with RENA pressures, this is all starting to move forward, and the request for this funding is just now coming in. These are only nine units out of the 41, I think it is, low-income units that we need to do, and so to give a huge portion of the fund to a small proportion of what we have to do is also disproportionate. In the criteria for the funding in the packet, there is a mention of financially feasible. Does it make a difference to the project being able to be completed, that we give them the money? This project has already been built at great cost, I understand, to the Whites and the other people who contributed to it. But the project is not at risk of not being completed if they don't get a grant. Others in the pipeline might desperately need this money to be able to make them possible. They declined to apply for state or federal grants because they didn't want restrictions that go along with those. I totally understand that. I have no problem with that, but now they're looking to us, who do not have deep pockets, who are in great financial uncertainty, for a large amount of money. So I think 3.5 million is, shouldn't, you should not even consider giving that amount of money. The staff recommended 150,000 per unit. There is no good benchmark. When you look at the list of what other people have done, that's on the low side, but some of those things were loans, some of them were grants with restrictions, so it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. I don't think you can look at that list and say, oh, this is too low. I would recommend that we follow Mark's number, even though it sort of was just compared to the county, that 150,000 per unit seems rational, but I would ask that you make this the maximum you give them. You give them 150,000 per unit, per nine units, as a total, not as an additional to what you've already done. You've already given them 187,000 in fee waivers, plus tonight, an additional 70,000 in fee waivers, and I'd like that included in it. And then I think 150,000 per unit, given this situation that we're in now is adequate, more than adequate, generous, given how iffy things are in town and what we have to do going forward to make sure we have enough, or at least approaching enough, low-income housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Is there anyone else in the schoolhouse that would like to speak? All right. Seeing no hands in the schoolhouse. We'll go online. So Rita has her hand up. Rita, welcome.
Thank you for taking my comment. Towns need all types of housing, and this project fills one of those needs. The nine affordable units that are being discussed seem to be pretty expensive for the town to be responsible for, in lieu that the owners did not submit for state or federal funds in order to limit or to have control over who might be considered as a resident into this housing, as was mentioned before by others. I'm not sure how this project pairs with our town's fair housing plan. At nine available units, the 3.5 million requested would average to over 388,000 per unit. And with the now 326,000 that has been reimbursed, it brings it over to, to over 400 it brings it over to, to over four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars per unit for this one project. We will not be able to offer this level of funds to other affordable housing projects in town and this precedent might cause serious problems for us in the future. As I mentioned before, our housing element number, and everyone knows it's two hundred and fifty-three units. I'm not sure how many units have been built. Maybe we have some other units in town that have been built, but I don't know how we're going to reach our numbers by twenty thirty-one. Our town is financially strapped. You know, how are we going to have extra money? Why would this project get three point five? And that leaves, you know, less than one and a half to do the projects to help possibly Ladera Church or Christ Church or any of the other projects in town. And I know the council has been working hard to look at options and, you know, everyone has been jumping in for, for some time. And I, I just don't feel that all the money or, you know, over seventy percent of the money should be going to this one now completed project. Thank you, thank you for listening and please consider these words because there's, there's a lot to be considered in giving all of this money when we can't even figure out how much money the town has at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Ron, you're up next. Welcome.
Hi, yeah, thanks, thank you. Thanks for taking my comments and I just want to say first, I could not hear a single word that Mr. Linder said. I don't think his microphone is working. So that was unfortunate because I was very interested to hear what he had to say.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's that, that mic can be a little bit problematic. It was on and he was talking. But you got a staff report, so I think you got the gist because that was the majority of it.
Okay, cool, thanks. I don't know if you've all had a chance to read the letter that Dale Fallo submitted, but I, I fully endorse his view that is wholly inappropriate to allocate one point five three million or twenty percent of our Affordable Housing Fund for, you know, a, a project that's been completed, which, but which only satisfies eight percent of our below market housing burden. As an aside, I approve his suggestion that seventy-five percent of the fund be targeted at very low housing projects with the other twenty-five percent going to below market housing. And, you know, any induction, any reduction in planning fees really should be subtracted from the Affordable Housing Support received. I'm equally concerned that, you know, going forward, the fund is, is not going to be replenished quickly enough to meet future needs. And this speaks to the need for more robust revenue generation. Something you might find interesting, Santa Cruz County's Affordable Housing Impact is fifteen dollars per square foot for any project over four thousand square feet. So, you know, a typical P V McManion could easily generate eighty-two, ninety or a hundred thousand dollars. The fact that the white family is the first to request money from the fund is, is, you know, it's irrelevant. We all know that history, but, you know, circumstances have changed. We need to build seventy-three very low housing, very low income housing units this cycle. And unfortunately, the next housing cycle will be upon us before we know it. Will we need to buy, buy land? Probably. And where will that money come from if it's not wisely managed now? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Dale, you're up next. Welcome, Dale.
Great, yeah, this is Dale Fallo. Thank you very much for your time. I'm not going to rehash my letter. I'm hoping that all of you had a chance to see it. I'm just going to point out a couple of things. Number one, you as the town council, you have a fiduciary duty as the, as the responsible parties for this Affordable Housing Fund. And so it's up to you, the fiduciary duty, to make good use of those funds and not dash them out willy nilly. Number two, you have a legal responsibility to do your best to actually find a way to incorporate our, our goals to meet our arena requirements. So having said that, I am going to stand very much by my, my calculus that I sent in a letter of trying to allocate as much of this fund to the very low income as possible, which I think is the most difficult to build in Portola Valley. Couple of other facts. This, even though the Willow Commons is a wonderful project and I think there's none of us that can, can say anything bad about it, it only services point three percent of the population of Portola Valley. That's a miniscule amount of people that it, that it actually serves. And so you have to keep that in mind. And I have to adjust my numbers because now that I realize we've spent about two hundred and somewhat thousand dollars in waiver of fees. If you allocate, if you follow Mr. Linder's recommendation, you would be allocating thirty-five percent of the Affordable Housing Fund to only about eight percent of our very low income and low income requirement for the next arena. And I think that's wholly out of proportion. And, and of the total requirement of the Rena allocation, that's only three percent of the total two hundred and fifty-three units that we have to do. So I would much in, in the comments about, well, the county gave this much money is completely irrelevant. It's a county that has a lot more money than we do. It came with a lot more strings than they're asking for than what we do. That is a red herring, shouldn't even be considered. Also comparing us to other municipalities is also irrelevant. This is Portola Valley, you know, we can't even, we don't even have audits for the past three years. We're in financial straits and looking at a way to balance our own budget. And we have an in lieu fund, this Affordable Housing Fund, that's going to be exhausted relatively soon. So we have to use our resources very carefully. I think it needs to be spread out among those who are willing to try and build, particularly the very low income units so that we can meet our, try and meet our arena allocation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. Karen, Karen Askew, you're up next. Welcome, Karen.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
We can.
Hello, hello. You know, I think the, the real positive is you can hear that the community is committed to subsidizing affordable housing. You know, that's not an issue and the community loves Willow Commons. So we need to keep those positives in mind. I do agree with a number of the comments that have been made by residents and we have a limited fund with not a lot coming in at the moment. And I think we need to be prudent on how we spend it. I wrote a letter to you, I'm hoping you guys all read it, but I wanted to clarify something because someone didn't understand where I came up with some of my numbers for units that may be built by Ladera and Christ Church in the future. As we know, the current housing element that's approved by HCD has Ladera Church in it for five to ten units, although ten is probably too many. But we know that Christ Church through the work done earlier this year is committed to building more units. And in our revised housing element that we'll be submitting to HCD, that number is fifteen to twenty units. And that's where I came up with the potential of twenty-five units that the church wants to build and those would be for families. So you'll get more residents in that way. So I just wanted to clarify that. Again, on the numbers, we have seventy-three very low income and forty-two low income units in our Rena cycle, which is a hundred and fifteen total units. So we, we need to be very cautious in how we spend the money because we want to support all of the affordable housing projects that we can. It was mentioned that we might need money to purchase property. We have a lot of projects where we want to incentivize ADUs and JADUs that could be for very low and low income. So there's a lot going on and it's a hard decision. The last comment I wanted to make with this respect to if we don't allocate the money within twelve months, we give it to the whites. As you know, these projects take a long time and we have till twenty thirty and I don't think it would be prudent to follow that request as well. And there you have it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Karen. Sarah, you're up next, Sarah Wernikoff, welcome. You're still muted. Sarah, if you're there, you're still muted.
I apologize, can you guys hear me now?
We can.
I haven't been on this side of things before, sorry about. Nice to see everybody. I want to start by thanking Mark for, for being here tonight and being a through line on this topic on behalf of the whites and the community. Also want to thank Darcy for being a quick study in terms of getting up to speed on everything. One thing that I wanted to take the opportunity to clarify is yes, when this project was approved, it was nine deed restricted and two manager units. But as built, it's operating as eleven, I'm sorry, nine deed restricted units and two manager units. As it's operating, since it opened, it's been eleven units rented to low income residents. And so I'm assuming when the town goes through an audit with HCD, it will be taking credit for eleven units. I'll leave that up to Catherine and the planning department to confirm. But that's how that property is operating. And as we know, when we went through the housing element, we had quantities in the sites inventory that we knew were likely going to change and therefore the numbers would get adjusted over time. So I just wanted to flag that. And I also just kind of, you know, hopefully everybody's read through my letter. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things towards the end there and say that a hundred, one point three five million dollar grant essentially covers the overrides driven by the turnover and complexities that the whites had with the town. And that's evidenced, you know, by the letter from the contractor. I also wanted to highlight that the whites were rarely careful in building this community in a way that was responsive to what the community said it was asking for, which was one story, two story clustered units without big massing, building in the Portola Valley way. That is so much more expensive to build that way. And they followed through on what the community requested. Secondly, building one hundred percent supportive, permanent supportive housing is more expensive than mixed use housing. And the town is taking credit for one hundred percent affordable housing and permanent supportive housing in its housing element. They wouldn't be able to do that if the whites hadn't built that more expensive housing type. And I think I also lastly just want to point out that this grant level of one point three five on a per unit basis is going to put the funding at the lower third of regional examples despite it being a higher cost model as I just shared. Lastly, I'm going over, I apologize. I do think that the council and staff needs to provide clarity on the projects in the pipeline. I have definitely heard numbers from the town that are inconsistent with numbers from property owners. I definitely want to see funds reserved for development at the churches, as has been said.
Sarah, now that you're on the other side of the dais, I'm going to ask you to wrap.
Yep, I'm going to wrap here by saying that my understanding from the, the representatives at Ladera that that's two to three units and at Christ Church, it's five to ten. So council and staff, please get clarity from property owners on what the real numbers are. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, are there any other members of the public in the schoolhouse or online that would like to speak? All right, I see none in the schoolhouse. And Greg just popped on, just under the wire. Go ahead, Greg. Welcome. You need to unmute.
Unmute, okay, great.
There you go, we can hear you.
Just a second, we've got an echo here. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I want to endorse the comments made earlier in the public comment by Judith, Betsy, Rita and Karen. I fully support those. I did want to make an observation, thinking through how we're going to meet these seventy-three very low income Rena quota units. And I think it's become apparent tonight that the Willow Commons project will have received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in planning fee waivers. And notwithstanding Sarah's remark about nine units versus, eleven units versus nine, which I think we certainly should get credit for. By the way, I fully support the seventy thousand dollar refund on the, the planning fees. But I think before the council makes a decision on the, 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 the bigger application from the Housing Fund, they should sort of think through how we're going to fund the additional sixty-two very low income units. So I take the seventy-three minus the eleven. Because if it takes two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of planning fees at Portola Valley Town Council to get eleven units, you can do the math on how, how, what, what the size of the waiver should be for each eleven unit block, if you follow my logic. So I think before you decide on how you allocate the Housing Fund, perhaps you should think through and maybe help us understand how is Portola Valley going to meet its very low income Rena quota? Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. All right, one last call. No one in the schoolhouse, no one online. So I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the dais. So Helen, I promised I would start with you.
So first of all, you know, kudos to the whites for getting this built. You know, anytime you take on construction, there's a lot of unknowns and a lot of risk, which is why developers some years when it doesn't pay, they go and play golf for the year. But you guys stuck it out, didn't play golf and you went and finished an amazing project. That said, I also am dealing with public funds. This is not, you know, right now it's a private effort and you are asking for public funds. So please know, first of all, that I appreciate what you've done, but I also have a duty and to make sure the public monies are spent judiciously. Which is why I was sad to see that this project did not apply for state or federal monies in any way. Because, you know, anytime you have public funds, you have some rules to play, play by. And as we've said, there's a lack of rules around or reasoning around what we, we are deciding tonight. And it's a tricky one. I also want to bring up the point about Santa Clara County's money donation to this project. Santa Clara County in two thousand and sixteen passed Measure A. It is a nine hundred and fifty million dollar bond to help pay for affordable housing. And they have seventy-five million approximately, give or take a million here and a million there, seventy-five million per year to make sure that they get housing built. So, you know, Portola Valley does not need to keep up with the Joneses, right? We do not, we cannot keep up. We have a four million, approximately four to five million dollar pot right now and that's all that we've got. We cannot keep up, in my opinion, with a seventy-five million dollar a year pot of money that Santa Clara County has to spend. So, so, you know, and generally affordable housing projects, you've got, you know, the, you know, Toyota version, generally it's eight hundred to build a door, as they call it, whether it's a one bed, you know, studio or a three bedroom, it's a door into a home. It generally eight hundred thousand to a million per unit is pretty standard is what's being spent currently. Since Half Moon Bay is trying to get some, a forty unit project built, it's approximately a thirty million dollar project, right? To see that we got a nine to eleven unit project for twenty-three million. The scale, sometimes the scale, while, you know, while it's a beautiful, amazing project, sometimes there's a scale of economy. And this, you know, many affordable housing projects are to building code and they are safe and sound, they are not fancy. They are not fancy. They are Toyotas. And the project we're looking at tonight, it's gorgeous. It's a complete Rolls Royce, right? And we appreciate that. But to spend 3.5 million on it, I think, is beyond our budget, personally. That's my view on this, on this project. So while I support giving it some money, I don't think 3.5. I do, I really think that we need to save money for some of our other projects. We just do, we do not have 75 million a year. We have our four, you know, four to five million from a one-time project that was because of the Blue Oaks project. And, you know, people thought, where the preschool is now, the Windy Hill preschool, they fought the units that were there that probably would have gotten some of that money at that point. How much, you know, how much should we spend? I'm hesitant to support the 1.35. So I'd like to hear what my colleagues on the dais think. I do want to support it with some money, but I definitely, I would like it below the 3.5. And I could go lower than 1.35, but I am curious, you know, because, because of the other housing projects that we have in the pipeline that we would like to see built. So I appreciate what the whites have done. I think it's an amazing project. I support Toyotas on affordable housing. I can't support with public money Rolls Royces. So thank you for your, thank you.
And Helen, just to clarify, would you support the 150-plus fee waivers? Or are you saying that you'd like to see it lower? I didn't quite understand where you ended up.
Right. I'm waiting to hear where other people are coming on. The one, you know, so I would be okay with the 1.35, but I could go lower if others are interested in going lower.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Rebecca?
Can I ask a question?
If you keep it short.
Yeah. What do you think about doing it per unit?
It is 150,000 per nine units is the 1.35.
150, yes. And are you, is that how we're making that decision then?
I, I mean.
Are we setting a precedent?
Wait, so the grant, the grant is for a fixed-down money. We can talk, I mean, whether we decide to set a precedent or not, I mean, as Tim clearly stated, he's going to look at that number. So, you know, whether we set a...
Everybody's going to look at it.
I mean, yeah, okay, but you got to separate, we're not setting a legal precedent. So we're not legally bound by that. But sure, I mean, you're going to have other developers. But other developers will certainly look at that.
Can I also say one other thing?
Please, go ahead.
When I, I had a contract with Affordable, Mid-Penn Affordable Housing. And at that point, the county, I know, and I appreciate what our town manager, her research, my research at that point indicated that the county, her doorway was giving about 60,000. So, and I would also point out that her doorway, and I would also point out, and it changes, right? It does change. I would also point out that the cities that are cited that are giving a lot more money have these impact fees and in-lu fees set up, right? And we don't at this point, you know? So it's not completely comparing apples to apples, right? We do not have a way to replenish our fees currently. So, thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Rebecca, go ahead.
Okay. So I do want to start out by thanking the whites. They have built an absolutely beautiful project, and it's serving a lot of people. I did want to clarify for everybody, they actually have 16 low-income tenants there in total. I know that there's some, still some information that needs to be worked out with HCD to give us credit for the additional units. And I did do a lot of research about the supportive housing issue. And based on what I've read, it would appear that they would be able to qualify with the shared housing. And I can provide my research to the count, to the staff. But anyway, aside that, I just wanted to communicate. I also did a lot of research, surprise, surprise, about what, trying to determine what other municipalities in San Mateo County have been helping in terms of funding. And I went through the list that Jim White put in his report. And some of the information is, I found a little bit different when I went and dug much deeper. So if we look at the Palo Alto project, the Wilton Court, Palo Alto provided a $20.5 million loan that has to be repaid. That loan is to be repaid with, with operating expenses, essentially, with their budget. It's part of their budget. It's part of their 25-year pro forma. A little bit of what they generate in excess goes towards paying that, those loan back. So yes, they paid essentially 347,000 per unit, but it's not, it wasn't a grant. I looked at the Palo Alto Mitchell Park. They gave $3 million for a 50-unit, of which half were ADD. That comes out to 60,000 per unit. This was in 2022. The other one was 2025. I looked at Los Altos, not in our county, but, you know, I'm just looking at all the list. Distill Circle, they gave, Los Altos gave 4.6 million. That's 51,000 per unit. This was a 90-unit complex. The San Carlos Cherry Street, that one was very impressive. I don't know exactly where San Carlos got the money. They did give 12.8 million, and that came out to $387,000. So kudos to San Carlos that they were able to fund that. That particular location was 33 VLI units. They, they had a limit, 10 of those units for people under 30%, 11 under 50%, and 11 under 60%. So, and they were one and two and three-bedroom units. So, you know, kudos to San Carlos that they were able to come up with that money. I wish we had that kind of money. Menlo Park also managed to come up with an enormous amount of money for Bell Haven. They did a 10-unit project, 3.6 million in city funds, 360,000 per unit. They were two to, they're planned to be two-to-three-bedroom units. Obviously, Menlo Park has dedicated a lot of money. And I assume that their Affordable Housing Fund also generates money and increases every year, unlike ours. Redwood City Fair Oaks, this is the one where half of it burnt down, unfortunately, during the construction, which is very horrible. 86 units, of which 39 are mental health supportive housing. $21 million loan from the county. I couldn't find a record that Redwood City actually gave any money to that project. That's, it was all San Mateo County loan. Redwood City Casa de Brato, 48 units. They gave four, the city gave 4 million. That's 83,000 per unit. Redwood City Middlefield Junction, 179 units. Oh, sorry, this is the one that half burnt down. The city gave 6.7 million. That's 37,000 per unit. And that one, they, the funding came from the Measure K, so, that, sorry, that was county money. That was not Redwood City money, county money. Kika Crossing, I could only find that San Mateo, the city of San Mateo, gave $5 million towards the parking garage. $22,000 essentially per unit, and that was a grant. All the other money that went into that 100 and, I think, 70 million dollars or something for 225 units, enormous project, were all loans and bond measure. So Belmont Firehouse Square, 66 units, $62,000. San Carlos gave 600,000 to Walnut Studios for 24 units, 25,000 per unit. Redwood City Hip Housing, seven units, 600,000, 85,000 per unit. Arroyo Green in Redwood City, 117 senior VLI units. They gave 2.5 million, 21,000 per unit. And these are all projects in the past few years. And, yeah, I mean, I can go on and on. But, so the range of projects that I am seeing are, you know, from 20,000 to, of course, we've got a few outlier, two outliers that I was able to find. All the rest are in the range of, you know, 20 to 70,000. So I kind of have to look at that. And then I guess I do have to wonder why there was no request to San Mateo County to help fund this project, because it's such a fantastic project. They, I would expect the county to have been able to support it. And I do want to say that some of these bigger projects that the county has been able to accomplish with their money is because they got money, they get money from HUD. Redwood City gets money from HUD, federal money from HUD. We don't seem to get money from HUD. I guess we're not the right, you know, we're too fortunate here to qualify for that. So you kind of have to look at a little bit with a grain of salt. So then going back to kind of this project. So there's two issues I have. And the first one is the concept of we need a framework for how we will distribute money to upcoming affordable housing projects. And I agree with people have said, you know, we need to facilitate VLI projects. VLI projects cannot be built without some type of public subsidy. And we need to favor VLI projects. And I went and did, I tried to go through the Rena numbers. And looking at the data, it's very painful to go through. But the best I can figure is that we currently are at, with the projection for Stanford with Willow Commons, and potentially with six at Ladera, though I know that's up in the air. We have 151 units left to develop out of our 253. This includes all the units that were built or in the process in 2024. Of those, I calculated that there are very low-income 63, oh no, 57 left, depending on what Ladera does. So somewhere between 57 and 63. So say 63, to be safe. So then I tried to kind of do some, run some numbers for a framework of what, how we can think about the projects that are coming before us. And if I were to, I would say that we need to stress the VLI, but also support the low income. And if I think we have 63 units of VLI that we need to support, and maybe only 15, 10 to 15 of low income, because thanks to the Will of Commons, we've met a lot of those. You know, I tried to put a dollar number that would work for all these potential units. And the numbers I came up with, and these are just, I didn't have enough time to really run scenarios a lot, so I just kind of threw in some numbers in here. The number I came in for very low income for what I felt Portola Valley could afford, based on what our current Affordable Housing Fund is, is $75,000. And that would be, for 63 units, 4.7 million. I mean, that's our, that's pretty much our current Affordable Housing Fund, which, you know, as a side note, I want to follow up on Helen's comment that we absolutely need to start having a fee, a development fee to increase that. And we need to work with the PV Fund to get, donate. I came up with 50,000 for a low-income, regular home, regular unit. And if we have 10, that's half a million that we need to come up with. And then under permanent supportive housing, deed restricted, and I put, sorry, I put zero for moderate, regular. And then under permanent supportive housing, I put 25,000 for moderate income. I, and then I, bouncing back and forth between 75,000 and 100,000 per unit for low income, and about 100,000 for very low in, supportive housing. Now, these numbers are far, far less than what we've been kind of hearing. The main key for me is setting a precedent for future projects and having money so that we can support the churches. We can support VLI units that we might have at Village Square. So I want to leave some money for that. It's clear we need to increase. We need to get people to donate to the fund, to the Affordable Housing Fund. We need to get development funds, fees, to increase that fund, because we're going to have more needs. So I was trying to just run numbers for Willow Commons. If I had all the money in the world, of course, I would give 3.5 million. It's a fabulous project and deserves to be funded. But we just don't have that kind of money if we want to have future affordable housing. We have to have money aside, otherwise, the churches in particular, they don't have a really wealthy sponsor. So we have to step in and help fund that. So I was just trying to figure out, you know, I didn't have enough chance, time to run the numbers, you know, completely. But if we stuck to the 75,000, and we have 11 units, because that's really what they have, you know, that's 1.1 million, I think. No, sorry, that's, this is where I didn't run all the numbers. Anyway, somewhere around a million. And then I agree that the project has been a true nightmare. And the town is very much responsible for just excessive costs that have been incurred. And because of that, I would recommend adding an additional amount just for their unit there that would bring up the per-unit higher, so that maybe it's 50,000 a unit or something in addition. That way, it would not affect our framework going forward. But it would, it would, it's just another way of how we calculate out the numbers specifically for this project. So, I mean, my, in general, I think the 1.35 is reasonable with the 256,000 of fees. And I also think that, you know, if we do finalize this framework, if we do end up raising more money for this fund, and if we do end up being able to confirm that the other five units are viable for Rena, then I would invite the whites to come back and ask for money for those five units in addition. And that might bring us up to 2 million for their project, which I would be okay with. But right today, I would stick to the recommendation of the planning department.
So Rebecca, I just want to make sure. So you had proposed these other numbers as potentially a future framework, but you're saying that you'd be comfortable with 150K plus fee waiver?
In general, but I would frame it more as 100,000 for this type of unit, plus 50,000 as a, I don't know what you would call it, hassle payment. You know, just to reimburse some of their excessive costs that the town pretty much caused them to incur. So I don't want it to affect the framework of what would be future supportive housing and future regular deed-restricted units framework. Because we can't afford to give everyone 150,000. So I want it to be clear that we're giving, say, 100,000, and then we're giving per unit, and then we're giving, you know, an extra fee waiver, almost you would call it.
And that would be, so I think what I'm hearing is 100K for a supportive unit, plus 50K bonus for being the first project and dealing with the slings and arrows, and then the fee waiver as well?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood roughly where you were. Is that it?
I think so. I might come back again.
Okay, yeah, I can come back. Mary?
Well, that was pretty impressive. Looking at this, I think the thing that's most striking is that this isn't a single, this isn't a binary decision at all. It's a multi-pronged strategic business decision. And as such, we're, we need to stay close to the numbers, which is why I was particularly impressed with you bringing in some numbers. But also, we need to see how the numbers incentivize other projects that potentially could be not as wonderful as Willow Commons. We'll never get that again, but we can hope that we will get some pretty special things happening that will make a village for Portola Valley. So I'm quite struck with the idea of loans and bonds. So I'm quite struck with the idea of loans and bonds. I think we're going to have to think about that quite a bit. I would, I wanted to start by saying that I take back what I said about we're not a grant giving organization. It turns out we are a grant giving organization for the, at least for this fund. And so that's exactly what we're doing. And we're taking it seriously as you would if you were sitting on the board of a non-for-profit giving grants. Although it's more complicated because we're dealing with neighbors who we're going to be living with and who's, who we want to be supportive of and who we want the wellbeing of our neighbors to be nurtured. So I also wanted to underline the other part of it, which is, this is not affordable housing at all. This is subsidized housing. And this is where the money, where the rubber hits the road is when you make these kind of decisions. This is what's going to make it happen. So what are we going to try and make into this? And I think, I'm not sure who first used the word flexibility, but flexibility and efficiency have been the two things that I have been longing for for this affordable housing business. And I think we need to have this formula, be flexible. As much as I would like to say personally, well, you know, we got nine units, we give you 150,000 a unit, we can move on and think about something else. It's going to have to be very individualized with lots, lots of grays. There's a couple of complicated moral issues here, which I'm somewhat afraid to talk about. But, but, you know, need-based giving, that's one of the things that people talk about when they talk about giving grants. Who needs the money? Where is this need, where's the need going to be? It's just something we have to think about. It's not just strategic. It's also, as you have a moral structure that your organization is giving money around. Okay. So what I'd say about Willow Commons is it's really hard to put a price on it. I think we all know that it's a priceless asset to our community. We are humiliated a little bit by having to say, well, we're nickel and diming somebody who's put large numbers of millions of dollars into a fabulous project, which we all are very pleased with. That being said, I think we do have to be realistic that we at least do a baseline on a per unit basis. So I've tried to lay out in my mind what the factors are. I'd like us to be able to be quick with our grant giving. I'd like us to be, to deliver the money when we need it, when the people need it, not necessarily as a reward for performance. And so that requires that we keep some funds. We got to have something to step up when we're really needed. So we're trying to get my bid. I got my bid here. I have changed it a few thousand times, but, and I'm not saying this is my final bid. I came in a little higher than Mark did because it hurts me not to be able to be generous in this setting, obviously. But that's not the way you make a business decision. Okay? And that's not the way you make necessarily a grant. It's not a sympathy grant. It's not a, it's not to make you feel better. It's to make the organization work better. Okay. So I don't know where we're ever going to get another person who gives a 55-year deed restriction. I just don't know that we're going to get that again. But you think we are in duty, so I'm glad to hear it. I am very pleased with the idea that you can, you can actually save 50,000 a door and still keep your place in society. That's, that's good news. I had gone to with 150, and I am comfortable with the 150 per unit. And with nine units, however, after Craig's comments, I think it would be nicer if we would stick with the, if we would, could at least hope that we could answer the need that the builders of Willow and Commons have today, knowing what we know about their development, that we're not going to be in a situation where they're coming back every, and we're raising all these very difficult, multi-pronged aspects of offering funding here. So in short, I think Barky did a great job. And I think we're close. I'd like to believe that this would satisfy and that hopefully everybody's gotten a little bit of education about what we hope to do with this, with this money. And hope that at least next time we'll be more efficient and more flexible and make things happen when they need it. That's my speech.
Thank you. So just to clarify, so are you saying you're comfortable with 150K per unit, but with a fee waiver? I wasn't quite sure where you came out at the end.
In the end, I got his bottom number.
Okay. So that's 150K plus the fee waiver. So it comes out, yeah, plus a fee waiver. So it was like 173,000 per-
Yeah, but what is the, let's, we're going back to how much we're just going to give him?
Well, that's fine. I'm trying to-
We're trying to get away from this unit thing. This has been helping us.
Well, we need to do both, I think, because, I mean, I think Rebecca's pointed out, she's got a formula. So you can always do it. It's fairly easy to multiply by nine to get back to-
Well, just give it to me then. What number are we saying? What?
Yeah, it's like 1.35, right, Mark?
1.35.
Yeah. So that's-
Yeah, I was higher than that when I started my speech. But now that I'm done my speech, I talked myself into that number.
Okay, great. All right.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, just, sure, hang on. So are you, we good?
Done.
Great, thank you. Yes, please.
Can I just get some clarification as we're talking about it being a grant? Can I, can we be clear? Obviously, the whites privately funded this development. But what I'm not clear about is, is the grant to a foundation or is it to the whites personally if, if we do direct staff, if we do vote that?
I'm guessing it's an LLC, it's an LLC, I think.
So it's a private LLC?
It's a private LLC, but-
It's not a, not for-
But I'm not sure that it matters because, I mean, it's the people who put the money out, right? At the end of the day, I mean, if we're being practical. So I believe it's an LLC that this is all wrapped in. But I'm, I'm comfortable that the entity that paid to build Willow Commons is the person we're paying.
Okay.
We're not going to just give, you know, we're not going to write Jim a check just because he's somewhere in the periphery.
Right.
I think that, you know, the whites did the bulk of the funding anyway, but I do believe it'll go through an LLC. But again, we can, we can sort that out. We can have the lawyer sort that out.
Okay. I just, I mean, we're talking about, there has been verbiage this evening about, like, we're going to give him, right? So let's be clear, because it is public money and sometimes there are, there are rules about what you can do with public money and who you can give it to. Right? So it's, I don't, so that's why I was-
Great question.
Wanted to clarify.
We'll have Catherine look into that and make sure that we do it right.
Agreed. And Mayor, I have one other clarification, if you don't mind.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. There's been some talk about precedent in various things, and I did just want to clarify, I think this was said earlier, but the council would not be setting precedent tonight in terms of the amount per unit or anything of that nature. This is solely for this particular project. Obviously, we have one council member who's recused as to this project. So just to be mindful of, you know, that our scope is, is for this project. The council has discretion going forward to apply a different, you know, analysis to a future request.
Sure. And that was my point earlier, that this is not a legal precedent.
Yeah.
I would say there's some practical elements that if I'm Tim, I'm going to look at this number. It doesn't, it doesn't guarantee him that that's the number he's going to get, but he's going to look at it. As you said, that's where he's going to start. And I believe him. So, okay. Any other comments before I wrap this up?
Well, I would have to say that I was not thinking of include, of adding on the fees. I was thinking that this would be minus the fees. It would be lower, because with the fees.
All right. So Mark's proposal was 150K per unit plus the fees.
Yep.
So it came out to about 173K per unit.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So are you, are you saying that you-
I thought it was 178.
Well, okay, so, I'm sorry. So my apologies for getting the number wrong. But it's not 150. The total is going to be 178K per unit because it includes the fees. So are you comfortable with that? Or are you expecting the fees not to be part of that? So we're just saying 150K per, per unit?
I'm not sure I'm ready to, I haven't heard what you have to say.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I'm willing to talk next. I'm just, I'm just trying to get everybody, at least get us all in a ballpark.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm getting to the point where I'm thinking, first of all, I really hate the idea that we're going to have to, that we're going to have to be coming because we're now saying, well, it's nine units, we're doing it for nine units. And then they're going to say, well, we got 14 units and we, and, you know, that, that kind of stuff. I don't want to be hearing this same story over again.
Right. I can appreciate that. Okay. So let me provide my feedback. So first of all, as you probably all have, I've received an enormous amount of feedback in the last few days. And it's a full range of feedback from, you know, we shouldn't do anything to, we should do, to do it all. And I completely appreciate that. I also appreciate Mary about, you know, we want to be a generous community and we're certainly a rich community. Unfortunately, we're a relatively poor town government, which is what makes this decision hard for all of us. I also appreciate the comparisons, but you know, San Carlos's budget is $122 million a year. They have, you know, their property tax is roughly double ours. They have a sales tax that's roughly equal to their property tax. And they have a transit of occu, transit, trans, bah, never mind. Yeah, hotel, yeah, but I mean, a transient, I can say the word, I just have to get it out, occupancy tax. So they have significantly more resources. And that's one thing I think that makes this so difficult for us is we just don't have those kind of resources. So then I look at, you know, 73 VLI and 42 low income. And, and you know, we're in year two of this housing cycle. The 73 are going to be tough. And, and I'm actually quite worried. And, and you know, I know previous council members have just said, you know, how are you possibly going to do this? And I don't see, you know, our path to 73 right now, to be honest. But with that said, I feel like, you know, we had our sunrise clause, we worked hard to remove Ford Field, we've developed a pipeline, you know, we had another working group that basically came up with new ideas. And, and we have a pipeline now. I mean, it's much better than what we had before. Because before we had an idea of something to zone, but we didn't actually have any developers that said they were willing to develop on it. So now we actually have a pipeline. And it's not, you know, it's not as big as potentially what we had there, but it is a pipeline. And I do think it's really important that we be fair to that pipeline and that we make sure that we keep money that we can fund the pipeline. On the other hand, one of the things I heard was sort of needs-based and some of the public comments I got, you know, sort of like, well, do the whites need this? You know, they've already built it. So it's already done. And I don't buy that argument. I mean, I think they built this thing. I think whatever we decide is fair, we apply to the whites as well as the rest of the pipeline. So I think that that's, in my mind, important. Finally, Rebecca, I think, you know, I really appreciate your sort of, you know, back of the envelope sort of framework, but I'm in complete agreement. We're not going to do it tonight. That's not the agenda item, but we do need a framework so that a developer can understand how much they can expect from the town. And if we want to make additional exceptions, that's fine, but you should be able to come in and know how much you're going to get. And I think that's part of, you know, when I've talked to Jim in the past, part of his frustration is not knowing. And that's got to be tough. So I'm, I'm pretty appreciative of that. So then finally, I mean, as we've all said, this is truly a great project. It is beautiful. We're all proud of it. The whites have, you know, every reason to be proud of it. We had a comment here earlier tonight about providing independence. I totally see that value. I mean, that's, you know, if you have a kid with special needs and you can provide them independence, that's such a powerful thing to do. So, so I think supporting that is important. The other comment I want to make is we, as a town government, can do better. I mean, we, we know that planning for the last three years, not just on Willow Commons, but across the board, has been poor at best. And it's been expensive. And I, and I appreciate that. So, you know, I think when I look at this stuff, I want to see us do better. Finally, I think we need to look for additional funds. Like, I don't, the idea we're going to take the amount of money we have in the Affordable Housing Fund now and somehow say, okay, we're going to divide it by 115, just doesn't make sense to me. I just don't think you end up with a number that's logical in terms of actually supporting developers. Because I mean, at the end of the day, this is meant to be an incentive. And if the number's too low, it's not an incentive. And then you just keep the money in the bank and nobody ever comes to ask for it. And that doesn't serve any of us well. Like, you know, our goal as a government is not to be a bank and just hold on to money and make interest on it. Like, that's not what we're here for. So I do think we need to find that balance. And so when I look at this project, I look at it as a first project. This is the first project we've had. I think that this project has dealt with considerable issues to move forward. Some is their design stuff, but mostly I think it's just we as a town didn't know how to deal with it. And that's not their fault. They were just the first project through the chute. So I guess when I look at this sort of net, I might like to propose something that looks sort of like 100K per supportive unit. I sort of like that number. I definitely think supportive units deserve more. But I like the idea of, we just say, you know what, you're the first project through, we're going to give you a 500K bonus for being the first project, which sort of gets us basically, it's roughly that same number. Going to be slightly more than Mark's number, but by like $50,000 or something. So it's, it's small. And then I think because a lot of those additional costs in fees, that, I mean, was it ever going to be 23,000? I kind of doubt it. I think that was probably a poor estimate in the first place. But should it have been 200 and, you know, whatever it ended up, I mean, you know, 250-plus thousand, that's crazy. Like, if it was 100,000, that would have seemed fair, but it's way beyond that. So I think covering the fees and doing the fee waiver in addition makes sense to me. So, so I'm roughly comfortable either with just taking Mark's number or, I know Catherine says it's, you know, it's not precedence, but I do believe at the end of the day, practically, everybody's going to look and say, well, how did you think about this stuff? And I don't think we're thinking about every unit in town is necessarily going to get 150,000. And particularly, these units as supportive units are, have been special. So I'm open, you know, I'm open to, so, sorry, look puzzled.
It's okay. Could you clarify? You're saying 100, you said 100,000 per supportive unit, and then you said 500,000 out of the chute, so 1.5, and then the fee waivers as well?
Yeah. Which, I mean, because if you think about it, so the 100K, so that's 50K less than what Mark's proposing. But if you take nine units times 50K, it's 450,000. So I'm just rounding that up to 500,000. So it's 50,000 more than what Mark was proposing. But I'm trying to move it into where I can imagine a framework could go. And I also want to acknowledge what the whites have had to go through to get this done. So that's, that's my thinking. And, and this is not, like, I'm not trying to make this the motion. I'm trying to put this out there as another way to think about.
Can I also just say, like, something we have not discussed much tonight is-
Please.
The cost to deal, that, you know, this, the supposed cost that it costs the whites, like, it's, it's been very nebulous to me. It has not been, like, I haven't seen documentation of these costs. I haven't seen, and I believe the whites don't take, but, but I also, my understanding is that sometimes- I haven't seen, and I believe the whites don't take, but I also, my understanding is that sometimes, something that was told to me is that a cost that should not have been blamed on the town, that was being blamed on the town. Right? So that's where I'm like, I hear you, I understand that our planning department has been in disarray. But I also, I don't have documentation to justify that, that's, I will just say that, right? I know our plan, our planning department has, has been slow. But, so, I would love to see, to hear more about it. I know the whites are online, I believe. And maybe, and I know we closed public comment, but I just wanted to bring that up, so.
So.
If you have more documentation.
Well, the document, at a minimum, we know that if you include the fees that we just waived in 7A, it's $256,917. That was just in our planning costs that we charged back to this project. Just 256, call it 257,000. I mean, that's just in our planning stuff. So.
So, I mean, we are giving, exempting them, and having, you know, and when watching permitting, there are costs to having our plan checkers, and it's not our plan checkers, it's for Leaf and the consultant. So it's, it is a cost to the town. And I'm still not clear about the cost, that, like, I understand the 257,000. But I'm saying the other cost, I know that there were lengthy delays with PG&E. Everyone has lengthy delays with PG&E, like, we all hate PG, sorry, PG&E, Marjorie, if you're listening. But, but this is what I'm not clear on, is the doc, like, these extra costs. And I didn't bring it up earlier because I didn't think about it, but.
I can say that when the fee waiver requests, we actually get a list of fees that were paid. And I had those verified by both finance and planning.
I think Helen's trying to ask the question of, in some of the stuff that Jim wrote, it's like, you know, and we had a bunch of other, you know, we had project delays, which cost us more money, that didn't even, you know, that had nothing to do with fee waivers, that was cost back on their side. And I think what I'm hearing is you're asking, like, well, what are those? And I hear you, and I wasn't trying to quantify them. I have to say, I'm generally comfortable with Mark's 150K. The only thing that made me back off of that was sort of Rebecca's analysis, that maybe 150K as a, not really precedent, but sort of practical thing, is something for us to think about. So I was trying to get at it a little bit different way. But, you know, I'm, I'm open, you know, if we're all okay with Mark's proposal, I could go forward with that as well. I was just trying to think about it a little bit differently. Darcy, did you want to?
Yeah, Tom Andrew, Darcy. I just want to separate policy conversations and this project, and just make sure we focus on the project. I'm happy at a future meeting to agendize a study session item to get feedback on the policy question, but.
I understand.
Just want to make sure. Tonight, we focus on the item, and I would just say, we're, we hear you about sort of this bigger conversation that's needed. But I, just important to point out, we have one of our members not here tonight, and so.
Understand.
What I'm hearing is a lot of conversation about, just my takeaway is, we're not setting precedent, and we'll return at a later date to have a conversation about the policy.
Agreed, I totally understand that, and I'm gonna stick by my, we're not setting precedent, and people are still gonna look what we do tonight, and they're gonna ask us for that. So, call that whatever you want. So, yes, I mean, it's clear, and I think we've made it clear to everybody who's listening, that just because we do this tonight is no guarantee that we're gonna do anything else. That would be precedent, we're guaranteeing, we're not doing that. But I think it's still gonna get looked at, so. So other comments, now that I've provided mine, Mary?
Oh, I just wanted to ask if I, if we've overlooked something. Is there an, and we have, we have our town engineer in the, in the audience, so I thought I would see if there was a looming huge expense coming to Willow Commons with PG&E. Because that's been mentioned a few times here. I mean, it just sort of hinted at in different.
Well, they're up and running, so what are you imagining here?
Well, I think.
So I don't know of any current proceedings right now on Willow Commons with PG&E. There are a lot of costs associated with PG&E, and sometimes there are delays. And a number of costs for PG&E that are sometimes unanticipated, that is quite common, we see with PG&E. I would need to look into that, I'm not familiar if PG&E is not part of the town, but I think that'd be better directed towards the whites. We could reach out to them to discuss that potentially.
I mean, I think we need to be careful, like, you know, the utilities, PG&E, West Bay sanitation, they're separate. We don't have any jurisdiction over them.
No, I'm just saying that, talking about need, that may be where the need is.
Well.
They're feeling the need.
Yeah. I don't think we should try to speculate on the whites' need. We know they put in roughly $23 million into a fabulous project. But I think after that, we have to be pretty careful that we don't start trying to figure out what their needs are.
Generally, if there are delays, sorry, I just wanted to mention also, Mary, generally, if there are delays via PG&E and there are complaints, California Public Utility Commission takes those complaints and will work with PG&E in the case that there have been extreme delays and/or costs to sometimes refund part of the costs through California Public Utility Commission, but it's not something we can really control. But I hear you.
So, other comments? Because one thing I was gonna say is, you know, if we're willing to sort of set aside this practical precedent discussion that we've had, I mean, maybe we just accept the proposal from staff, because I hear general acceptance of that, which would be 150K per unit plus the fee waivers. So anybody willing to make a motion to that effect?
It's a clarification, because I'll be the one probably taking a stab at the first draft of the agreement. The council already approved the fee waivers, and so I just want to make sure that for this resolution, we just have a dollar amount that we can plug into the resolution.
Yes, fine, fair enough, yeah, that, I mean, unfortunately, I do think of it as per unit, because I've got this other stuff going on my head. But I appreciate your point, so. So Mark's number was 1.35, right? Yeah. So is anybody comfortable making that motion? Or is there more discussion?
I make the motion that we, I should look at the exact wording, sorry. Do we know what page it's on?
So are you looking for the resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, here, it's Resolution 2979-2025. Wait here. I make the motion that we, the numbers aren't even in here, sorry. That we award 1.35 million from the Affordable Housing Funds to, hang on, that we award, yeah, 1.35 million in Affordable Housing Funds, and we authorize the town manager and direct her to enter into an Affordable Housing Grant Agreement with Jim and Patty White for the Willow Commons Housing Project in a form acceptable to the town attorney.
And could I make a friendly amendment to, but entered into the appropriate business entity? I mean, we don't know that it's Jim and Patty, right, it's probably an LLC.
Right. I accept, yep.
Okay. Your mic's not on.
I second it, and welcome the idea that we finally are realizing we have this fund and we need to use it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we have a motion that's been approved unanimously. Thank you again, Mark, thank you very much for your staff report. Thank you, council, for thinking this through, and thanks.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
3.2 million.
Right, and thank you to the public, I mean, thank you for everyone, both here in the schoolhouse and people online for, you know, giving us your input and sticking with us.
And please consider donating to the Affordable Housing Fund.
Yeah, there you go, perfect, thank you for that plug. Okay, I'd like to suggest that we take a five-minute break. We can, yeah, we'll, I'll let Judith know that we're done, and we can take a five-minute break. Is that enough time for people? Great, all right, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Oh, boy.
Thank you, gonna bring this meeting back to order, if we can. Hi, I know, trying to keep peace in the kingdom here, no gavel. But we only have council, subcommittee liaison, and regional agency reports. I know that we have one of them in the packets, so unless people have questions on that, before we go to public comment, are there any verbal reports? Put them out there for people to comment on. I'm not seeing any, okay. All right, so, yeah, go ahead.
I have sort of an interesting one.
Okay.
That came up in my office hours today. There's a whole skyline of safety group that's being formed after the lethal accident at Four Corners. And just for everybody's information, because it's important that we pay attention to what's happening in our, in our area. There was a bicyclist who was killed at Four Corners, and Woodside is working, they've, Woodside has been meeting and trying to get the backing of Caltrans to update the bicycle safety in that intersection and on South Skyline. So there might be actually some, this is a very important time, if we do want to get some action for making the Skyline Corridor safer with a few, a few crosswalks that might help slow traffic a little and improving the shoulder for people to let their state senators and congressmen know that we want Caltrans to come to our rescue.
Okay, well, maybe we can put that on the town managers.
They at least need one stop sign, but we could use a few more at Wendy Hill, for example.
So I'm gonna ask the staff to take that under advisement and see if there's a way to connect and monitor that, because it's not really a subcommittee report, but it is relevant for, for our purposes, and I'm happy to have that. The other thing that occurred to me was, we had Ray Mueller's, we have Ray Mueller's office hours before the town music and the town center. We had roughly 12 people, some came and went, a lot of good questions. He explained a lot about the county's role, jurisdiction, some issues relating to water districts and some challenges that people in Los Trancos were having, given water flow and damage to property. And he promised to follow up on those types of things. But it was quite a wide-ranging discussion, lasted about an hour in full, so that's, that's all I got. If there's no other reports, I will open it up to public comment on the liaison reports. There's no one in the schoolhouse at this point, and I'm looking online, I don't see any hands raised.
And the only other thing I would add is, we had a great Little League parade.
We had a wonderful Little League parade, and those guys do deserve a huge shout-out. I didn't realize how connected some of our local officials are to that ballpark. Ray Mueller was there, Josh Becker, and then, you know, a Major League Baseball player that is now an announcer that kind of grew up in his career playing there, and it was just a generally fun festive event and reflected a lot of hard work by those, you know, our town residents, both on the coaching side and the player side. So really proud of them, and, you know, if you didn't, didn't see it, we'll post a couple of pictures in our next newsletter, because they're just plain old fun. All right, so.
And I just want, one other thing related to that is, they're signing a baseball that we'll put in the history room.
Perfect, perfect, yeah, the heritage room, I think we're calling it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I say one thing about that?
Yeah.
And also, thanks to the staff for helping to organize, right? Like, and, you know, the fire truck that Rebecca and I were in, they talked about how last time, because somehow they were in service while they were in the parade, which was nerve-wracking for them. And they were very grateful this time that they were not officially in service while they were in the parade. So thank you to everyone for your organization.
Yeah, it went really well, and the team was organized, and it was just a nice, nice event, so thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep, I'm not seeing any hands raised, so we'll bring it back, motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all.
Yay.